I call this meeting to an end. I'm going to ask the clerk to read the compliance for the Freedom of Information.
Yes, being in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all news media and persons requesting notifications.
I ask Mr. Sauls to do the pledge of allegiance, application by councilman activities.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
O most holy and righteous God, we come before you one more time humiliated as we know how. And Father God, we might be going into this meeting, Father God. And Father God, we pray, Father God, that you strengthen us, Father God, in our mind, in our heart, in our body, in our soul, Father God. And we begin to go through this meeting, Father God. And Father God, we just want to tell you thank you for another day, Father God. And Father God, we want to ask you, Father God, to throw your loving arms around the Marie family, Father God, of Lawson, Father God, of the former sheriff, Father God, and one of the deputies, Father God. And Father God, we actually touch to the family, Father God. And as we go through this meeting, Father God, we ask you, Father God, give us the increase. We ask only a minute blessing in your son Jesus name. Amen.
Amen.
This is a workshop regarding 95 Wicksford Center Development Agreement Ordinance Number Zero dash two zero two two dash zero four and Triane Development District Ordinance Number Zero dash two zero two two dash zero three, formerly Project Sycamore. But this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the council. We have workshop set up for you today that will hit on the main topic that you have pressed upon us to try to find a remedy for, and that's the traffic generated from the development. You may recall at your previous meetings, you had the traffic professionals present to you. They have some more information to give you today, and they're able to present, show you the traffic model, which we thought would be helpful and respond to any of the pushbacks that the county has made to the traffic professionals. Obviously, you also have the applicant represented in the audience. And then, once that's through, we want to provide an opportunity for you to ask any questions of the traffic professionals about those items. And then, we would suggest, Madam Chairwoman, if you allow us, that we transition into discussion about the development agreement. Typically, we usually do this discussion in an executive session, but we think this is an important project to get out there in front of everyone, and so we're willing to talk that through with you, at least from a staff perspective. Mr. Teller should put a lot of work into this with the developer's attorney, at least to get through the methodology with you, to show you how we plan on recommending that you address those issues through the development agreement. Numbers are still a little bit fluid as far as infrastructure costs, taxation issues, those kind of things, but we did want to get through the methodology so everybody understood how we're putting together the development agreement for your review. With that said, Madam Chairwoman, I don't know if you want to mention anybody, recognize anybody in the audience. I think we've all worked together before, and without any further ado, if that's your preference, we can just turn it over to Ms. Beal to talk about the traffic.
Hi, Madam Chairwoman and members of council. Great to see you today, this early afternoon. The administrator is going to log into this here real quick, and just to kind of give everybody an update, we went over the traffic study that was performed for the project the last workshop. It was approved by, it has been approved by the DOT and was reviewed by the third-party consultant for the county. And what we did was go back and look at some requests from staff of looking at a scenario where trucks would be able to turn left or right into the site, but only right out of the site. And so, we updated the analysis to be able to show that it had, you know, some difference, but, you know, little difference, but it does, it does disallow the trucks from turning left, going towards Hardyville at exit five when they exit. And then, we also created some simulations for you guys to look at. There's, there's kind of screenshots from the, I'll kind of pull them up, and then we can kind of talk through, and we, I'll put them on a loop so that everybody can kind of see, and we can pause them at any time and all that, but that's based on the traffic analysis with this, what we call three-quarter access, where it is left in, left in, right in, and then right out. And then, I'm going to start with what the, kind of how that would be controlled, just kind of answer that question that the civil engineer has pulled together on how that would be controlled. Oh, sure. How's that? Is that on? Okay. So, the, so this is what's proposed. Is that?
Is it on?
Just turn the volume up on the mic a little bit. Can you turn that volume up some? Volume on her mic, please.
How about that? There we go. Okay. So, what we have here is what is proposed to prevent the, so you would still be able to have passenger vehicles, your regular car, your employee exit, exit out left here. So, if you, so on this, we've got seventeen, so this, this, this over here would be the Hardyville side, this would be the two seventy-eight side, and you would come through, there would be kind of an overhead barricade, you may have seen them, there's sometimes at airports when you enter a parking garage, something that's a physical barrier to be, to prevent a certain height of vehicle, and that's what would be, that is what's proposed at this time to prevent the trucks from doing this left turn out, turning towards Hardyville. So... And we'll start with, so these are simulations, start with PM because it has the most vehicles. So, I'm going to pause it real quick. So, essentially, what this is, is a simulation software associated with the traffic analysis that was performed, and I'm going to zoom in so you can see this a little bit better. But you've got the ramp system that we analyzed, we analyzed two seventy-eight and seventeen, and then we've got the project driveways. And so, this is, this is at double speed, and then also, it's just a snippet, it's a two-minute snippet of what it is. I'm going to put it on the loop real quick. But I wanted to kind of zoom out a little bit more on this one, just so you can kind of get, get activated. So, so the project would be over here on the, on the left, or I guess, on your left, and you kind of see, we've got to go in the colors of the, the vehicles. If, if it's turning yellow, it's a car that wants to turn right. If it's that kind of teal color, they want to turn left, and then white is through, or they've, and then greens, they've completed, they've basically gotten through the intersection at that point. So, you can see, this is the northbound ramp here, so this is coming off interstate ninety-five northbound, going towards Bluffton over on this side, and then Jasper, you know, this seventeen would be over on that side. So, now we're panning over to the southbound ramp, and we had to zoom in so you could see the clarity of the vehicles. But we've got, you know, this is the people coming on to southbound, I ninety-five southbound, these are the people coming off of ninety-five southbound. And then, this would be the intersection of seventeen and two seventy-eight. And as I said, this is at double speed, just to, just to make it a lot a little bit. So, now we go down to the driveways. And so, you've got seventeen here, running more south on the, on the page here, and then we've got the driveway as we go. So, with this configuration, you would be at a, probably at a yield for that channelized right to go north towards seventy-eight or two seventy-eight, and then you have the left as well, and you can see that there's, you know, trucks and cars throughout the, you know, throughout this whole network. And then, I should start. So, any, any questions on, on this in particular, or on the simulation for kind of what you're seeing?
Madam Chair, this track pattern, I mean, this is, this is current as of today, right? I mean, as far as this is.
This is future. Yeah, this is, this is the concurrent configuration, yeah.
Yeah, current configuration, yeah, thank you.
This is, so this northbound, I'll say that, it is the roadway configuration, this is a signalized northbound ramp. So, this does add a signal that does not exist today.
What's the timeline on that signal?
It's, it's planned to be monitored, and then, once it is warranted, it would be installed, but I don't have a timeline on it.
That'll take a while.
There's federal, there's federal guidelines that we have to meet for the DOT to approve it.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Do you have a lot, do you have the model without the lights?
I have a no build. That doesn't have the project traffic in it, that I can show you that doesn't. So, this is a slightly different time period, and this one, just, this one goes straight to the, this is that off-ramp, the northbound ramp, and this is just built traffic, but on the project. And then, these are the, this is two seventy-eight, the southbound ramp. And then, this moves us west over to two seventy-eight at seventeen. So, we're back at the, repeat, you don't have the, since we don't have, since this is a, since this is a no project scenario, so we did not, I didn't simulate, I didn't screenshot it down by the project. But these are both PM conditions.
Now, this is the current, this is current traffic?
This is no build, so future, future traffic, but.
This is future.
Future traffic, no project. And then, I have AM as well. Let's, on this one, we'll start with the no build AM, and then we'll go to the build conditions. So, this is the northbound, we have the two seventy-eight going east-west on this here, and then this is the northbound ramp.
What did you say about the yellow cars that turn to green?
So, the yellow cars are the cars that want to turn right, and then, when they turn green, when they get through the intersection, when the program accepts that they've gone through the intersection, they turn green. So, yellow is cars that want to turn right, and blue are cars that want to turn left, and then white are cars that want to go through. You can see this, there's the little traffic signals here, so right now, two seventy-eight's got a green light, and the ramp coming off ninety-five going towards Bluffton, you can see, has got red. Two seventy-eight just turned, just got a red light, so now the ramp has got this green light here. And you'll even be able to see a little arrow come about right there when that gets, when that turn light gets a green arrow. And then, this red is the stop sign that you have today. And then, AM, y'all recall from the last workshop, AM occurs one hour between seven and nine in the morning, and PM occurs one hour between four and six in the afternoon, as we, we analyze. And this is the morning with the project, and then, we've got the northbound ramp here. Zoom in a little bit more on this one. So, we've got two seventy-eight going across the page, and then, the northbound off-ramp is the looks that are going right now. And so, now we're at those southbound ramps. And then, we'll take it down to the site driveway. So, as we said, you'll be able to turn left or right into the site, and then, the trucks will only be able to turn right out, but you, we only have passenger cars turn left out like this person is doing right there. Are there any questions or any one in particular y'all want to say again? I can get into as much, as much detail as y'all would like.
I look at it too hard, I get dizzy, so, okay, but I, you know, my main concern has been, you know, the traffic flow of trucks through downtown Hardyville on seventeen, and I think the right turnout, and then, the height barrier, I think, is really, a really good way to ensure that that'll happen, because obviously, a transport truck's not going under it, which will force him to go north. So, that, that is a good, a good way to deter that from happening. And I'm not a logistics expert, but I would think that, you know, if you've got trucks coming from south, the quickest way to that site would be to exit at exit eight, because if, I would assume it's a much slower pace if they were to go through downtown Hardyville. I mean, I'm just asking, that's just a comment, I don't know for sure.
And we have them assigned to, to do both, if they're, when the signal, when the signal is placed at exit eight at the northbound, then that will make that even that much more attractive.
Ah, yes. Just, is, is there a simulation for ninety-five being shut down?
For ninety-five being shut down?
Well, with the traffic and all that, so we're going to go right. So, what happens if you get on ninety-five, trucker sees that that is shut down or it's jammed up like it normally did, where does the truck go then? Does it still go on ninety-five, or is there a simulation that you can say where does it go?
So, we, we do average weekday AM and PM peak hour conditions. We don't, we don't do traffic studies for emergency situations or incident, incident situations. It's only, it's for the average conditions, because you don't want to, you can't solve for something that is, is dynamic and can change. So, if there is, you know, anytime that there is an incident on roadway, people do make different changes to their traffic, travel patterns, but as part of a traffic study, that's not something that we analyze.
Madam Chair? Thanks to Waze and other apps, I don't think it really makes any difference what small town you're in, if you live along I ninety-five, it's going to send you the most direct route if there's a wreck, just traveling Friday afternoon to Clemson, there were dozens of wrecks on twenty-six, and it's sending me through all these little towns and stuff, and I mean, it's just the nature of our, you know, that's technology. So, I mean, I don't know how you would simulate if I ninety-five is shut down, you know, really it's, it's these GPSs and different apps that you download for, you know, going from place to place, and they're just going to send you wherever they can, I guess.
The, the regional modeling, you know, even the regional modeling looks at more of an average, an average day, not, not these incident conditions, but more of the, because they're just, they're just so different, they happen in different places, they affect different, you know, if it happens here, then the traffic may go here, if it happens there, the traffic may go there, so it's just not, not that it's not studied from an incident standpoint, but from like a traffic study standpoint and modeling standpoint, it's typically not, it's not very common.
Just asking.
Any more questions?
The John Smith Road, the road between the school and the property, so I guess with their traffic plan, master plan, there's no, there won't be any of these semis on that road, right?
Yeah, we don't expect there during normal conditions for there to be any of the truck traffic to be there, and actually, when you have the trucks turn right out only, it actually makes that John Smith intersection a little bit better, because you don't have that southbound truck movement that we had in the original analysis. And the, as part of the traffic study, there's, there's the northbound right turn lane that will be added to kind of help with the John Smith, that seventeen intersection.
And you stated earlier that DOT has approved this, their.
DOT approved this scenario that was full access at those locations, so this is even more detailed. So, they, they approved it with left out, with, with no restrictions to the project driveways. That was, that was a request of Jasper County staff.
Any more questions from the council? Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions?
Thank you. I, one of the big concerns that the city has expressed and why we did not vote for this right from the beginning is the truck traffic that come, that will come through White Hardy Boulevard, because there's no restricting a right-hand turn here. And I don't see the major problem being simulated here. If, if this is two point five million square feet, if you go to Riverport, there's forty-one loading docks in each hundred fifty thousand square foot building, so that is the equivalent of about six hundred and seventy-five loading docks will come here, most of which will be coming from the Georgia Port Authority, coming straight up through the city, and that was the whole problem. You see two seventy-eight there? Nobody ever objected to that, so I think what you would want to see is the effect of truck traffic coming from the Georgia Port Authority, going through White Hardy Boulevard. And Mr. Sauls, your question is essential to understanding what's going to happen here. We all know I ninety-five stops just about every other day, and it will take probably twenty years or more before I ninety-five is wide all the way up to exit third three, which will affect the entire roadway from, from the border as, as traffic continues to back up. Every truck will go through that traffic and find, as you say, rightfully so, GPS will take them through the small streets of Hardyville. Now, think of what will happen when I ninety-five's up, and that's not covered by the study, because they're not looking at that. That truck will come out of that site, go right, and they're not going to get back on I ninety-five because it's not moving, it's going to come around and go up John Smith Road and down south, back to the Georgia Port, because that's where the next pickup is. And that's what's not being covered here, and looking from a bigger picture, is what happens when traffic boxes, bogs down, and it always does, and I think that should be, that would be my question, two questions. What, what's the simulation of all that truck traffic coming up White Hardy Boulevard in addition to what's already there? And number, and number two, what we all need to be concerned about is what happens with the almost daily backup of I ninety-five, and those would be the questions I would ask.
Thank you. Ms. Castle?
I have no questions. Thank you first.
And Steel? Okay. Okay?
Can I add one, one comment regarding the trip generation and the traffic that was assumed for this project? We use the Institute of Transportation Engineers information, which is nationally based on sites across the country of how many trap, trip, truck, truck trips and traffic would be associated with this site, and that is what is modeled on the, in the simulation, and also, the existing truck traffic with the addition of the projected truck traffic associated with this site is also reflected on throughout the, throughout the simulation, as you saw. We, we went in and took all the turn movements that had truck traffic, took the existing truck traffic, added any additional truck traffic, and that is what you're seeing. It is, it is a two-minute snippet, but, you know, that is what was considered in the analysis.
Anything else?
Just, Madam Chair, sorry, talking about the mayor's comment with the trucks making a loop and coming back. Um, talking about the mayor's comment with the trucks making a loop and coming back. Um, and Mayor, just to make sure I was following you right, you're talking about them making a loop and going up two seventy-eight and coming back down John Smith and then turning left. Is there a way to designate that as not, uh, through truck traffic, uh, through DOT signage? I mean, that seems to me to be a simple fix. Plus with the landscaping, y'all's master plan and things, I mean, I just wouldn't think that a semi would be going down that road once that's through signage and y'all's master plan, I think that would be preventable. And I might be wrong, but I was just throwing some out there for, for...
I have no idea if DOT would prevent, I know when the project was before the city, we asked the question, was there some way that we could prevent, uh, through DOT, that the trucks coming through White Hartie Boulevard? And the answer, as I recall, was no, we can't prevent it. The master plan is, uh, hopeful of calming the traffic so they're not going sixty miles an hour from there, but it's not, it doesn't prevent the traffic. So to my knowledge...
We need to do some research here.
I, I, it would have to be research, I don't know if that could be prevented.
Seventeen, is a truck route?
It's a US route, and so...
Yeah, I know, but I'm, I'm at seventeen, I'm talking about...
Which is seventeen, between school and...
They, they were not asked about John Smith.
Ma'am?
They were not asked about John Smith, and they wouldn't be open to truck, you know, limiting trucks on that, they were specifically asked about seventeen, and they said that it was a US route.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Just to, or, okay, was it there between truck route and railroad? Why would it be between seventeen and John Smith as a destination, just for information?
So seventeen is a, is a US route, and there may not be, there may, may not be a difference, but, uh, DOT has a couple different types of routes. You have US routes and South Carolina routes, so if you like US seventeens and US two seventy-eight, those are both, you know, US, US routes. Then we have South Carolina routes, which, um, South Carolina forty-six, forty-six is a South Carolina route, and then we have something called secondary routes. And so depending on its functional classification and, and its type of route, there may be, um, you know, there's different, different rules, amount of traffic and everything, um, that they look at associated with the different rules that are associated with each type of route.
When you were in Hardyville, when you were doing that, you were coming off of John, you were, had an exit and entrance off of John Smith. What was the destination there, or had you, was that a truck route?
It was employee, that was employee entrance, and that's exit.
Yeah, but at the beginning it was not, it was a truck route. You had talked about truck traffic. Hardyville said, no, we don't want that because of the school air and all that. Now, so you must have known something before that. All my screen is, is, is that a truck? I mean, have we looked at that as a truck route? Because I only, I only think that, it's a pine yard, if I think it's a problem, but you're gonna go down there and then I take a left, down to forty-six, forty-six over the three, uh, three fifteen, and then down. That's all. Uh, this whole thing is because of traffic. We don't, we don't wanna become like a Hardy Boulevard. We wanna get ahead of it, not behind it. And that's what's happening, you know? Everything's predicated on, okay, we're gonna put a light in there, but when you go DOT, it takes an act of God, you'll go, go down exit five, but those truck, uh, the truck stops. That was, when I was first coming here, that was the big thing, they wanted to put a light in there, and DOT said, no way. Now it's dangerous. So, that's all. I had a decision statement, I guess, but I just wanna know what, what was the consideration in the beginning? You should know that, about why, how would that be able to handle the traffic?
I mean, all South Carolina roadways now are allowed trucks unless there's a truck restriction, and you go specifically to them to ask if they can do a truck restriction. I mean, there are typically not a lot of truck restrictions on South Carolina, any SCDOT routes that are owned by SCDOT and maintained, but you can always ask. Um, that question was not asked specifically for John Smith. Um, but it could be, it, it's their decision on if it meets the criteria for consideration of, of no trucks.
I mean, we didn't have any other questions for you. Thank Ms. Beal for her presentation, and, uh, if you'd like to transition into the discussion about the development agreement.
We're gonna take a ten-minute break, and then we'll transition into that, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna continue.
Madam Chair, members of council, um, I think we had a follow-up item on the traffic.
She has to step out on the call, I can, um, give you some information.
Okay.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, members of council, my name is Nicole Scott, I'm with Dexon Pruitt, and I represent the applicant. Uh, Jennifer Beal had to step out and take another call, but she did manage to get a hold of, um, DOT on the question of restricting, um, was it John Smith Road? Um, and, uh, DOT said that it is possible, it's an application process, an ordinance has to be passed by the governing jurisdiction. I'm not sure if the entirety of John Smith is within the county or within the town of Hardyville.
The city.
If it's within the city. So the city would need to pass an ordinance, and the city would be responsible for enforcing it. But it is possible, they just have to take a look at the request, more detail.
That oughta be easy, Mayor.
We have a meeting Thursday, we, I think we can still do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
And, uh, Madam Chair, we were just gonna move into, if it's all right with you, into the, the discussion about the development agreement. I mean, you've done several development agreements before, we've never done one sort of out in the open, but we thought we'd try it this time. You've been given the information, uh, you've been given a clean copy, you've been given a red line version, a red line with actual blue, uh, writing, and then a smaller version, red line version that shows all of the changes, often boxes to the right, and some people like that, so we gave you all those. And it's sort of a, uh, evolving document, uh, but we wanted to go through the main points of it, and you've heard of traffic improvements that may be warranted. Uh, the development agreement speaks to, uh, when and how they are warranted, and also addresses the cost of those improvements, and if you'll, uh, if you're okay with the idea, uh, Madam Clark, we could ask Mr. Tetter maybe to turn to that, was it page eleven? There, just page eleven on the DA, and he can sort of go through those fees with you, I think that's the perfect place to start.
Madam Chair, members of council, we've got to, uh, this is a multi-part section, uh, item ten, we've got the structure of infrastructure and services, and, um, yeah, I'm gonna start off and let you know that I did the best I could with the information enhanced, some of the numbers might change as more data becomes available. Uh, and what we looked at was under N on page eleven. Um, I'm looking at my red line, we added in there that there was a traffic study by Beal Engineering, and that the highway seventeen improvements suggested in there had to be installed. Um, we prohibited left, uh, left outs on highway seventeen, which is the genesis of that VAR system that you saw, the picture I showed you along. Um, we accelerated, we think, the warrant system requirement on I- ninety-five, two seventy-eight overchange, uh, interchange. Um, the traffic study said on an annual basis, uh, once it's warranted, paraphrasing, we have it in there after five hundred thousand square feet is operational, uh, or earlier if required, the warrant must be done, the city of the signalization is warranted on I- ninety-five exits and other improvements, and if needed, they have to be installed. Um, and updated, if it's not warranted at five hundred thousand square feet, then on an annual basis thereafter, uh, the warrant must be re-performed. Um, what we had in here was we started at a point with development fees in the next section, that, uh, when we looked at the Hardyville system, they had six hundred and sixty dollars starting off as a development fee for other things. We've changed the nature of those fees to address, uh, road and other capital improvements and fire improvements. Um, so, we also included the possibility of using special source revenue credits in case the development fees, um, needed to be supplemented, uh, for some of these costs that are not one hundred percent attributable to the development itself going into there. And that's what you have in one section, N four, talks about poss, uh, this framework for a multi-county, uh, ORC and fee load taxes with special source revenue. Um, to this point, there hadn't been a request for a credit, uh, as we've had with some of our other economic development, but then kind of looking at a spreadsheet analysis of what's been asked for and given before, we're thinking that number may be ten, ten to fifteen percent on special frame credit for traffic and other capital-related improvements. Um, under the development fees, we have calculated that a full build out of two point six million dollars using the six hundred and sixty dollar, uh, thousand square foot, we don't have, and round figures, one point seven million dollars, um, which is probably not gonna be enough based on the latest engineering estimates that we're trying to put together. Again, that's back to the potential having a, uh, special source revenue credit to assist with a direct impact on seventeen or on I- ninety-five, two seventy-eight interchange. Um, one thing that we discovered discussing this matter among staff is that fire rescue has specific needs for heavy industrial, I say heavy industrial, for large industrial complexes, and, uh, as our understanding, Jasper Caddy doesn't have that capability in hand, neither does Hardyville, so we calculated, had them, uh, had our fire chief, uh, reach out to find out what it would take to upgrade a system to be able to do heavy rescue, and so we included a, uh, a, as a ballpark number, uh, five hundred dollars, which would purry thousand square feet, which raised one point three million dollars, which should be more than enough to cover.
Uh, Mr. I was just gonna say, uh, Madam Chair, if you'd be okay with us to chief to report on exactly what that heavy equipment unit is, what it does, and why, please, we have the need for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair, members of the council. A heavy rescue is one that is equipped for industrial, actually, it's a very diverse all-hazard approach. So within that, you'll have rope rescue, confined space, trench rescue, um, it is a very specialized, um, skill set, and so within that, it also requires special equipment. And when we looked at what we have available in the county, not only as the county, but our municipal partners, a heavy rescue would serve the citizens in the industrial development tremendously. And so within that, um, what we would like to do is put a heavy rescue in this area if the industrial developments continue to move forward, and then that would be offset by intergovernmental agreements that we already have that are moving forward, um, and augmented by our, our neighboring partners. Uh, if you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
But we figured since that was a direct impact, and, uh, there's, most of our development arrangements have historically included in, uh, a requirement that I think we call it enhanced services, maybe, I guess, unnecessary, they're the developer's responsibility to provide those, and we brought that into there. Um, let me back up and say that we've identified those, the other impacts mitigations that are shown on the Beal Engineering. We also added in, um, on a page, um, fifteen, I'll just, you'll have to go there, but we included the notation in our minds that there was a White Hartie Boulevard improvement plan that had been approved for seventeen, went out this far, so we have included the requirement that the landscaping, sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera, in this area has to be included in the traffic mitigation program as the project goes forward, so we're not having one end of the project not completed, or not done at the time that we have an opportunity to do it, using what Hardyville has done to the extent we can, um, fly those things in, um, for all our communities. Um, we have also included in there, to equalize things, a developer fee that is equal to the fee load taxes or ad more taxes plus additional millage, uh, which is the millage that would go onto Hardyville so that we, uh, keep things equalized, that'll be used for, uh, things that we need as we go along. It's not a double dip, it's a credit against the developer fee.
What page are you on now, David?
Ma'am?
What page are you on, ma'am?
Uh, that would be on page twelve at the bottom, it might be carryover thirteen on yours.
Some twelve at the bottom.
Um, but we, um, have that in there. Some of you may remember when we did the solar farm development agreements, we provided for the annual development fee, which was, uh, equal to or close to or a little bit above the ad form taxes that they were paying over the fee low, um, and we gave a credit for the actual fee lows that were paid against that, sometimes they're route, sometimes they wouldn't. We use that concept to provide, um, a fund for enhanced matters, as you can see in there. Um, we also, as you may recall, in the process of considering future impact fees across the board, so we have included provision in there that gives credit, we're not gonna double dip again, but if a impact fee or traffic or fire was put into place, um, it would be applicable, but the improvements already paid for or qualifying improvements that were paid for in development fees would be credited against those, so there's not a double dip in there. Um, we included an inflation factor, um, we have used before the annual inflation factor that the South Carolina, uh, Harvard Red Deer Association County...
Association of Counties.
Uh, they provide us what we can add in each year to add more taxes for inflation, that's a kind of a third party, just interested in what is, what needs, what it needs to go up, it's not tied to, uh, a federal CPI, which can fluctuate based on what they're looking at, anytime, but it's, uh, fairly uniform in, in the state.
Is that inflation factor assessed annually, or is it...
Annually. Um, I'm gonna tell you that the rest of my red lines, uh, blue lines, depending on which version you're looking at, um, deal more with, um, cleaning up the structure rather than doing anything substantive. We included, uh, pre-litigation mediation, uh, if there's a dispute, um, just on page eighteen, um, and, uh, address the default provisions to bring them more up to speed as one of our later developments, uh, agreements have in them, and, um, the rest, the rest of these blue lines, I don't think are, uh, substantive, they're cleanup, uh, talking about recording, uh, when things have to be recorded, uh, some standard stock language, nothing that addresses the meat of the matter, which is how do we fix the traffic, how do we provide the service to the need, how do we, uh, make sure that the media and the county are not paying for things that the developer ought to pay for because of this direct impact, while providing, uh, for the, uh, venture, not the eventual, but the instance where there's already some thing... things that need to be fixed, and we need to help participate in fixing those as well as the developers want it to happen. The numbers that we have in there were my initial, and I'm proposing this as well, to have some numbers that we're looking at based on the information we had at the time, they're subject to change, but I think the structure works well at the body for fixing matters that we can fix as they become apparent. And I'll try and answer any question that you have about any of the specific items, and that's the structure of what we try to do is the number we have.
Counsel, if you have any questions.
Mr. Madam Chair, I have a few. On the, when you just talked about the millage, that you balance it out, you said you're going to have county plus what would have been Hardyville, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Why? We don't get, why would you include that in there? Because it has nothing to do, it just seems to benefit the developer versus us, because we have a separate, we have a separate way, and then when you add the Hardyville, means nothing really, except they're going to get the benefit of Hardyville being in there for reduction, or not to get the revenue from that, or nobody's going to get the revenue from that.
Mr. Kemp, it's just the opposite. The development was, as you all know, previously proposed for the city of Hardyville, you'd have had the two layers of taxation, the county and the city tax. In this instance, it's not, so the city tax does not apply, but staff took the position that the developer was willing to pay that initially, so we want that money, and that is our position at this point.
They are paying it?
Yes.
How are they paying it?
Well, they will pay.
That's going to be filed, correct? So, you're going to have a reduction?
No, sir. It's additional revenue. Instead of the value of the tax going to the city, it will go to the county.
I have some more questions. Who is the staff? You said, everybody says staff. Who is the staff? And who did the negotiation?
I'll start out. I do most of the writing on this, but I discussed, of course, with Mr. Folsom, that there's a development issue involved, I deal with Ms. Wagner and Danny Lucas. I've talked to Eddie and I, the county administrator, I've talked to the fire chief, because those were the informations that we wanted to get a handle on. I have negotiated per se with the owner developer, I have alerted them to the areas that we were going to be delving into and provided them, at the same time we provided to you the red lines.
Okay, we're going to go back to the previous one. When I asked you a question, you said, "Is that a legal question?" Do I ask you the question, or do I ask any of the question, or do I ask the staff? All right, I want to clear this up a little bit. All right. Because you denied, you said you wouldn't answer the question because it was, you were, it wasn't a law question. You won't answer that, is this for? Just answer it, and I'm asking you the question. You can't stop and ask a question. Madam Chairman, I'm asking you the question.
And I hit the gavel. When I do hit the gavel, you ought to quietly acknowledge, and then I will refer that you go ahead and go, "Let me say what I have to say." Okay? We, as a council, are here. All of us deals with certain things, and I don't think it's good practice to come out and just ask these people a question. It's not fair to them. And this is something that you want answered. We would prefer, this council would prefer, that you write it out and email it to them. Then at the next meeting, or whatever, publicly, they can answer you, or you can read the answer, or whatever. It's not that we are trying to deny any answers, but we want it to be fair to each and every one of us, because the way my head is, you can ask me something about something we did at the last council, I may not remember, and if I give it to yourself in my head, I may be giving you wrong information, and then you come back and say, "Aha." So, let's do it fairly, we're not going to get into no back info, no kind of argument, but that question we are not going to answer today. Now, I want you to get that question down as to what he wants, and you can answer it at the next council meeting, which is right around the corner. I think that will be more in a professional manner.
So, you're asking me to ask questions, but I can't ask a question? Very simple question, who do I ask?
Madam Chair, if I can, I think it depends on what the question is. I mean, if you ask the question, the right staff member will answer your question.
Okay, I have a question. Who do I ask? Does the attorney that's going to answer? If the attorney's not going to answer a question, because it's legal, then who do I ask? You? That's what I'm asking. Because I'm asking the same thing.
If you will indulge me, I will attempt to explain the distinction between the question that was asked me two meetings ago and what we're getting into now. Two meetings ago, I was asked while an ordinance was pending for second reading on a different subject, if something was major or not. I replied, "That was not a legal question," because I am not in charge of the parliamentary goings-on for this particular council. Whether or not a major, a minor amendment that was before the council was something for the chair to rule on, and if the chair said it was not a major, the council could have challenged the ruling through the parliamentary procedure. That is why I said it was not a legal question at that particular point in time, as to whether it was a major or minor amendment to a pending ordinance. In this particular instance, I'm not certain what Mr. Kemp was asking me about this particular document in front of me, but I'm happy to do my best to try and answer if you can assist me with what the real question is.
Okay, I'll go on. On page five, this is just my, I think it should list, it says, quote, "laws of South Carolina" in the mention, 631-8. You do it in other places, but not there.
You're talking about the 1976 as amended?
Says, at the top, it says, "Considered by the county and its extension of the term according with six dash thirty-one dash sixty of the Act."
Right, 631 is the Development Agreement Act, 629 is...
I understand that. I'm not, I'm just saying, maybe you should put the state, the state. This, right down there, if you go down to the next one, is it South?
Oh, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
That's all right. And then on page six, the usual buffers in order to, I'm assuming that when you say the county administrator, he's going to go with complaint information first?
The buffers are generally an interpretation by the planning department in these areas. And I'm happy that we can pause here for a moment, because one bit of feedback I did give was that in some areas, because of the topography, 100 feet may not be achievable, but the opacity is, so that is a number that may come back after further review of actual site dynamics out there. But the way it's set up is, it's the administrator, employees, and the planning director. I ran it through him as this is a contract as opposed to a planning document.
And Madam Chair, if I could just respond to that. DA is, as you know, is a lot of, "What do you want to see in specific?" And you can be more restrictive than our other ordinances, and so, a great example Administrator used of the solar farms. And the solar farms, there was a lot of discussion about, can they be seen? And that was the main complaint from people, so we worked on our buffer requirements. I don't know if some of you were involved in the Turkey Hill solar farm, which never got started yet, but those buffers were even increased through the development agreement even further than our existing standards. So, that's basically what it is. You address those things that bring you the most concern with the development, regardless of what our other ordinances say right now, we can impose those through the development agreement. So, the idea there was to give a, as large a buffer as you could to prevent seeing the operation. As Mr. Teller said, 100 feet may work, in some areas it may not in others.
In eighteen, the order reached, the government shall have the right, but not the obligation, to restrict access within, into or above. So, when you go to your eleven N, or you go to eleven, you have all these restrictions. Is that counterproductive? You're saying one time it's not obligated, yet the other time you say one. You're saying no right turn, no left, you want a right turn only, yet this says they are obligated.
There's also a final sentence added in that says, "Not standing, there are required restrictions on truck traffic limits contained in Article 11," or, I think that's, 11 Envelope. So, that section that says, "No left halves overrides anything here." There's also the possibility that within the project themselves, there will be restricted areas beyond any area that the public can come into as to each of the building module areas. That's what I was trying to capture there.
Okay, I'm just asking. Especially the knowledge that the agreement shall not prohibit the application of any compression of future building and housing or other standard codes or add-on work taxes of general applications throughout the county and town by the county council, be necessary to have that help. Is that a protection for health and welfare if something comes up that's major?
That's a, I made a change, take it out of there, and I put it somewhere else, given that I'll figure where it is. It should be number on page six, item three. It's actually more expansive, but language are added on number three on page six.
I guess page 10, it kind of says that fire roads and then this connect to irrigation of water, landscape within the property is such as economically feasible. Who determines that?
The genesis of this particular, and this is the drainage system language I'm held, the bottom of page 10?
Right. Top of the 10.
The genesis of this was...
Use of effluent.
Yeah, use of effluent. This was a, I'll say, a paragraph that was inserted many years ago when all of the Hardyville developments, beginning with Argent West, where there was going to be a large scale effluent needed for golf courses, other matters like that. In fact, that carried forward, and various places struck golf courses, there are golf courses that are applied to this particularly, this type of operation. It's all dependent on where the effluent, gray water is available. On Argent Boulevard and other areas, the Water Authority has made provisions for effluent, gray water, purple pipe, whatever you want to call it, to be available. In this particular area, I don't know that it is. I don't know that there's any availability of effluent at this particular point in time, and the amount of effluent being created on these sites is unknown at this point, so economically practical, I guess everyone has to look at it and use business judgment and reasonableness as to whether you're going to require them to pump effluent, when it may cost four times more than using irrigation system or stormwater, this one aside. That was my thought process in looking at this.
Under 11, development fees, page 12, administrator, you include administrator in there, you marked that out, there is no administrator, development fee?
I discussed that with the administrator this morning, it's a carryover, and...
Yeah. Madam Chair, if I may, it's, we don't put administrative fees in there that are not specific to a certain task, we've never done that. What we have done, as a matter of course, is in filo documents, we have typically had language that require the developer to pay an administrative fee for, you know, the billing process for reconciliation of an annual meeting to review it, that kind of thing. But we've never put an amount in there, and quite frankly, I don't think we've ever exercised our right to charge that. So, we do, I want to be careful when I say that, we don't propose to recommend to you providing any type of square footage administrative fee, but we do think it would be important to include it somewhere if we do a filo, that's typically where we put it. It just requires the developer to pay an annual fee, $1,000, $2,000 a year, or something like that, so that we can review these things. We've all seen, we've had some issues with billing of filos and SSRCs. We really want to get that to a point where we have an outside group that reviews those annually with everyone involved, each developer, county staff, if it's in a municipality, the municipal staff, so everybody understands, and there are no surprises when bills come out about what the correct bill is and who's getting what portion.
This is new to me, so, is it normal that we would pay for development fees to build the roads? And if so, what happens if the fees run out? Do they stop, or do they continue? I mean, how does that work? As you're saying now, the fees that we're developing now are not going to be enough. So, if they run out of money, or if they run out, and on top of that is, oh, in some other places here, it says that they're responsible for construction and financing. So, if they, are we going to be liable for financing if they run out of money? Or they run out of fees?
Yeah.
Fluid fees.
It's a fluid process now, so it's a little difficult to talk about the actual dollar amounts with you, but conceptually, I think Mr. Teller can walk you through that. This is not uncommon that we could potentially apply a special source revenue credit. Trying to think of one we did that may have some resonance is probably like OBT Crossing. Did we do that at one time? We did a road through there and talked about credits for paying for the road. That was an old version of it. Trying to find another one that may have worked. But it's not uncommon, Mr. Kemp, to do that. It is a meeting of the minds of the actual cost of the infrastructure, and how do we pay for it, and how do we pay for it coming out of the proceeds of the actual development? If you want to run through how it works.
The way it has worked typically in southern, in Jasper County, has been, okay, if you have a road that needs to be built, you know that it needs to be built, you have an idea of how much money it's going to cost, we calculate the fee, the development fee for the road, the impact, your site offset, whatever you want to call it, to meet that. And it is paid as units come online or permitted. The developer has to pay for it upfront, but is reimbursed as the money is collected up to the amount that he has expended, or they have expended on that. East Argent has that, the, Argent West had that, where if you built a spine road, for example, you got to collect along the way what had been, reimbursed what had been collected along the way. So, that's the general outline of what we started out here. We did not have good numbers at the beginning. The number that you see for roads was calculated based on what Hardyville had started off with as for its fees. We didn't have the actual numbers, and we still don't have true numbers. We have SWAG on what these improvements from 17 are going to cost. One of the reasons I was waiting for numbers is I wanted to make certain that the stacking lane along... lane along seventeen could turn left in, and driveway one and driveway two stayed the same as they were going through this, and we didn't have additional road improvements we needed to build up there. And we're also going to have to quantify the landscaping, lighting, bicycle, pedestrian improvements for White Harding. So this number is likely to change, right? It may also change in that if we determine that some of these improvements are not directly related to the impact of the development, by providing a special source revenue credit out of the taxes we've been there, so that we're paying, we, the county, are paying a portion of these fees to improve the road systems that benefit everybody, not just the developer. So you have those two mechanisms in through there. There's also the possibility that should they want to utilize municipal improvement district, which was what was used on Hilton Head Lakes, now Margaritaville to provide those, I don't know that it's cost effective to do that on this small project, but they can use that as a borrowing mechanism, increase their own taxes or a special taxing district to move forward on that. So that's the scenario, that the developer pays, we reimburse along the way. If we ask for something extra that's not really necessary for the system to operate, we should in all fairness participate as a county government.
Okay. I had to do that.
Why?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
I'm just going to say, we get lost in the alphabet soup of economic development, what we call all these different products. Mr. Tetter mentioned a MID, it's actually in the county, it's a CID, there are all ways of actually getting to pay for the infrastructure that is going to be required for the development. Mr. Tetter mentioned that the fee, I can't remember what the dollar amount fee is per square foot, but it...
Six hundred sixty.
And that's likely going to generate...
One point seven million.
Early estimates, that's probably one point seven, I think, which is probably half of what it's really going to cost, okay? So as we move forward with an agreement, finalize these numbers, either that number's got to go up, or we've got to talk about a credit to try to get them to where they need to be.
Why don't they just stop? Why don't we just not pay the fee? What's the process of doing the fee if they're going, we're just going to give it back to them? That's essentially what we're doing, correct?
It's a time shifting over when the money becomes available. You're not going to collect the one point seven million until all two point six million square feet is developed, you don't pay upfront. So we can't collect it, we're not going to collect it except on a period of years, but we need the improvements done in the first year of construction, or however many months it takes. So we put the onus on them to provide the money, collect the fees, because those fees will be paid by not necessarily the developer, but by the owner operator of whatever pad unit that they're taking. We collected a building permit, not a development permit. And I believe that is consistent with the way it's done in every jurisdiction that I know of.
Just seems that we've created paperwork that you don't need to create. But anyway, impact fees, someplace in there, we had, there was an exclusion of impact fees for what you've already paid. Let's say that there's an impact fee that the council has yet to consider, haven't come forward, they put a traffic impact fee, let's say it's twelve hundred dollars per equivalent residential unit, which may be in a thousand square feet. They would be subjected to that under this language here, except that to the extent they've paid, let's use the number that's in here, six hundred and sixty dollars, that would not be payable. I mean, that would be a credit against that total amount under the new impact fee. So it's an accommodation, recognizing that if they paid for something that would have otherwise been paid for an impact fee, they don't have to pay twice for what they've actually paid. That's, I'll ask this question, if it's an impact fee that doesn't, it's not covered, again, we have fees now coming in, right, that are going, are limited, whereas an impact fee continues on. So would it be better for us to keep those impact fees, or potential impact fees in there, and do it someplace else? Because after ten years, we stop, or twenty years, let's say.
Well, after, listen, after this development agreement ends, impact fees will be payable for any new construction, at the higher amount or the lower amount, whatever's in place at that particular point in time, the development agreement ends, right? What the development agreement statute, six thirty-one, and I do not know this section, but as I recall, it provides, excuse me, under the impact fees statute, not the development agreement, the impact fee statute, it says that if there is a improvement made under the capital improvement program by developer, other fees for those improvements, person paying the fees gets a credit against those. It has been used in Beaufort before, I know I've had it in some developments over there, where if there was a road connector, a traffic light, or whatever, that was to be installed by the developer, and that improvement was included in the county's capital improvement, road improvement fee. That developer agreement fee was credited against the impact fee that they'd otherwise
One last question, I think this is for the developer. When we, when I was in Hardy, when I looked at the Hardyville, there was a big section on there about water, that you were going to move the water north, and you're going to reduce it down to thirty percent flooding down into Hardyville, yet when we came up here, we've never heard of it. Is that still on? Is that still going to be? I think that was more than, that was more than what they required.
Hold on a minute.
I mean, we're going to utilize per civil engineer best management practices to reduce any storm water flow. I, to be honest, I don't remember the thirty percent or not, but we will obviously engage our civil engineer to do the correct calculation so storm water flow is mitigated.
So you don't, you're not, you're telling me that what you were going to do is not what you're going to do now?
I can't say I remember that thirty, I'm not saying that's...
Well, you had a guy from Georgia come in, I think, and he sat down, he talked about how they were going to mitigate the water going into Hardyville, and you're going to strike north. My question at that time was, if you're going north with it, aren't you just going to move the water to someplace else? And your answer was that it was up to the county to make sure that the water was being evacuated across ninety-five. You had to put another pulver.
You don't worry, guys, we're, we need to find out.
Yeah, I was like, I don't want to answer that.
I mean, that's very important, because if you're going to start out here, Hardyville is the one that's the recipient of all this water. And now, previous to that, you say, well, there's residential. Well, residential does stop water, believe it or not. There's grass there where you don't have, you're going to have all hard here.
We'll pose that question to the engineers as stated. I apologize, I did not negotiate the Hardyville development agreements, I'm not familiar with it or its terms, but we will definitely comply with the county storm water management ordinance and make sure that any concerns and requirements under that ordinance will be followed.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at. You, I don't know if it was compliance or not, but you brought a specialist in to say, this is what we're going to do.
Well, again, I can't comment, I can't comment on what we were discussing in Hardyville as I was not present for the Hardyville conversations and not involved in that negotiation, but we will comply with what the county requires.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I guess if there are no other questions about the development agreement, and your understanding that it's a work in progress, we're still working on that, I guess it would probably be appropriate to talk about next steps, timelines, so forth, remind ourselves where the project is. I have to continuously do that, and I needed some help with that this morning in reviewing notes with Mr. Tetter. Mr. Tetter, correct me if I'm wrong now, the DA has had one reading with the county council and two public hearings thus far. It requires two public hearings legally, but you can have as many as you want going forward, you have to have three readings of it for adoption, okay? The PDD has had one reading and one public hearing, which satisfies a legal requirement. Again, it requires two more readings and as many as public hearings as you would like to place upon that as well. We spoke about MCIP, we spoke about filo, we spoke about potential SSRC, special source revenue credit agreements. We're not quite certain of what, if any of those will be necessary going forward, but as we continue to work over the next few weeks, we'll probably flesh all those out for you. So having said that, Mr. Tetter, where do you see the schedule of adoption needing, needing to be?
Madam Chairman, Chair Leger, Ms. Council. The red line can be, has been put into a clean version, which I will now update to include a couple of corrections that were pointed out today, the striking bad end fees, and a little bit more of a clarification on the fees, the fee language you hear, to perhaps clarify. That will not take me but a day to do. I have a phone call on Wednesday with the developer to go over any changes that I've made and through that. So the DA will be basically, unless there's a major change that somebody thinks about that needs to be done, will be basically done in the format with the substance, all the items done there, ready for second reading when you are. After second reading, there's a possibility that one of these numbers may change. We talked about the six hundred and sixty dollars, that number may change. There's nothing that, it's a math, it's a question of math, at least the goal is to have the developer carry its weight and go forward. So if the number changes from six sixty to seven fifty, or to six hundred, that can easily be accommodated, and you can have a second reading when you're ready on that. PDD, as I understand it, the only change I can think about in the PDD which we can accomplish through the DA is a change in the buffering requirements to synchronize those. That's my understanding, without having Ms. Wagner here to tell me if there's anything else in PDD that would be changing.
And I think, David, since the buffer that you, the council has proposed in the DA is more, would be in addition to what is included in the PD, I'm not even sure, we need to go back and change that for the PD, but I'll leave that to your release discretion.
Well, given that, Madam Chair, it sounds to me like definitely the DA would be eligible for your receiving it on the March twenty-first meetings, is that right?
Yes, if I could interrupt this for a second. I believe what the developer is looking for, and what I've gathered, I think you've gathered from the last couple of meetings, is they would like to get to a second reading so that they know that the council is willing to move forward if all these items are addressed. And it would be helpful for us as county people to know that before we engage the services of our economic development attorneys to draft MCIP and SSRC documents to be moved forward along the side of that, so that it's a complete package.
Excellent point, excellent point.
I'm sorry, Tetter, but we are hopeful that our conversation on Wednesday will be a final conversation. We agree in principle to everything that has been presented. As Dave mentioned, we've got a lot of numbers, there are some things with the buffers we've just got to see with, we have a great amount of wetlands on that property that affects layout and such, but we feel strongly that we will be able to have a final development agreement in front of you on Monday.
Madam Chair, thank you. That allowed us to kind of get out where we were with the project, and as David said, how much time we've invested in it, and whether or not it's the council's will to move forward or not, and what that ultimate schedule will be. So if you have any questions with us, we're happy to take them at this point, but otherwise we'll proceed with bringing you the documents as quickly as we can to your consideration.
Madam Chair, it was our intention when we posed things moving forward to post them with additional public hearings, we just have to bring it forward.
At this time, I call for motion to adjourn.
So moved on, Chair.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye.